Good morning everyone and welcome to our second Open Innovation webinar of the series. Today we are joined by John Campbell, Development Officer from Glasgow City Council, and he'll be sharing his experience of open innovation in his job role. He did join us on the first webinar and we got a short introduction into his experience, but today he will cover that in a bit more depth. So before we get started, we will be recording today's webinar, so it will be accessible at a later date, so we'll upload that to our YouTube channel. And we will have a Q and A session after John's presentation, which will last approximately 20 minutes. So if you've got any questions during John's presentation, pop them in the chat box, type them in the chat box and we'll pick them up during the session afterwards. So without further ado, I'll pass straight over to John to get started.
Thanks Siobhan. Hi folks, my name's John Campbell and as Siobhan said, I'm a Development Officer within Glasgow City Council. Today what I'm going to do is just provide a very high level overview of my experiences around open innovation and what Glasgow's currently doing in and around that space. But just before we start, I just want to give you a little bit of background about myself. I worked within Glasgow City Council for the past 15 years and up until two years ago, I was the guy who spent six months collating requirements only to pass them to our IT providers and then hit my head off a brick wall for a number of months whilst trying to get the work undertaken. But two years ago, an opportunity arose as part of a programme of work that Glasgow were doing around open innovation. And since that, I've been leading on the programme. I currently work within our Centre of Excellence for data analytics and visualisation. And what we're looking to do is, as part of the team, is develop a new way of working that is combining design, data and innovation. And I'll come on to speak a little bit further on. What I would say is that we are definitely not experts within it and we're learning all the time. And we're really keen to speak with other public sector bodies to hear what they're doing in and around the space. So as Siobhan said, there will be a Q and A at the end. My contact details are on screen at the moment, so if you are interested and want to speak a little bit more, then please do get in touch. Okay, so today, as I said, it's going to be a very high level overview. And what we're going to cover is a very brief section about what we believe open innovation actually is and when should you be using it. We'll then speak a little bit about how Glasgow City Council is using open innovation to develop new working practices internally. And then I'll speak a little bit about three case studies that will give you some exposure to what we're actually doing. Then we'll have a wee chat about the current challenges that are being faced and what our key learnings have been to date. That way, I think it's good if we can share some of your experience. Therefore, if you guys are looking to do something similar, you're not starting from the beginning, you can take some of our learnings and try and embed that within your process. So what is open innovation? Although it was formalised as a concept in 2003 by an American professor, the roots can be traced back as far back as the 50s. The concept was originally developed by the private sector to look at new ways in which private companies could develop their own technologies and subsequently profit for them. However, it's only really been in the past 10 years that it's been seen as a way to solve problems within the public sector. If you look online, you'll see a number of different definitions as to what open innovation actually is. But the one that we've came to within Glasgow is what you can see at the moment. So it's a proven method of solving tough technical and business challenges by leveraging relevant subject matter expertise from outside your organisation. So what does that actually mean? So for us, that can involve scanning the horizon to finding and creating new partnerships with some of your smaller, more agile companies who are based locally. And they've already developed a new concept that could help solve some of our challenges. But it's also about how do we work together with some of the outside agencies to try and co-design new products or services that will actually help solve some of the big challenges that we've identified internally. When should you use open innovation? So I suppose the key thing is it's not the answer to every problem that you face. For us, we see this as being a methodology to solve some of Glasgow's biggest societal, citywide challenges. For your traditional projects whereby you already know what the answer is, then that's when you obviously use the more traditional project method of the waterfall. For challenges whereby you think you know what the answer is, but you don't know how to get there, then you would use the agile approach. But from an open innovation perspective, it's about when you don't really know what the answer is and you don't really know how to get there. So for medium to high risk challenges, where there's pretty much high uncertainty that what you're actually looking to develop might not actually work. And how do you better use yet unknown external knowledge sources? So how is Glasgow using open innovation? So what I'll do is I'll give a quick background as to how we got started. I'll then move into a little bit about our involvement with an open innovation programme that's been facilitated by Scottish Enterprise and Strathclyde University. I'll then speak a little bit about some of the processes that we have developed internally that, again, as I mentioned at the beginning, were based around design, data and innovation. So when it all began, in 2015, Glasgow City Deal secured 1.1 million of capital investment as part of a wider 1.3 billion programme. The funding that we received went towards the creation of the Tontine, which is Glasgow's business incubation hub that's located within the Innovation District in our merchant city. When the Tontine was set up, the vision was to create a story to contribute to the local economy by supporting growth businesses to increase turnover and create high value jobs. However, at that time, it was identified that there was a number of both internal and external factors that this would be a great opportunity to look at developing new innovative ways of working that we could actually use and embed across Glasgow City Council. And just to give you an example of some of those factors, in the current economic climate, money is crucial. So we had to look at new ways and how we could save money, but actually realign existing resources for better use. You've then got the New Community Empowerment Act, which is putting citizens at the heart of local decision making. So we have to bear that in mind as well. But from an outside perspective, you've also got that disruptive change which technology is actually bringing within the private sector. And what that's actually leading to is various evolving service delivery models and how some of your external organisations are delivering their services to the citizens. So those combined have led us to think that this is an ideal opportunity to look at how we approach problems differently to develop new products or services. As part of that, the Tontine offering, to help support some new ways of working, we established our Centre for Civic Innovation. The centre was set up to try and foster a collaborative approach to problem solving, not only between the city council, but also between businesses and most importantly, its citizens. We believe that by bringing people together from all sectors, that's industry partners, academia and business, the physical space that we have set up would help to stimulate the co-creation of new innovative concepts that could be used to address a range of problems that we've identified as being key over the next five to 10 years. The main aim of our Centre for Civic Innovation really is to empower the people of Glasgow to try and develop and lead change in the city, but also to develop a brand that will attract further funding to help scale up what our ambitions actually are. At the time that the Centre for Civic Innovation was set up, an opportunity arose, as I mentioned at the beginning, through Scottish Enterprise's Open Innovation Programme. And what that is, it was an open call for funding, which we were successful in. And it was made up of 13 public and private sector organisations that basically came together to try and develop best practice and create innovation through partnership working and collaboration. Some of the organisations, it's not only public sector bodies, we've also got a number of private sector. So just to give you a bit of a feel, from a public sector perspective, we have Glasgow City Council, Edinburgh City Council and also NHS that are involved. But from a private sector, we've got organisations within the oil and gas industry and even someone from the defence sector. Now, when I first started, I wasn't quite sure how this was going to work. But when we got together, we soon identified that we did have similar challenges. And by putting our heads together, we were able to try and come up with how this could actually work within each of our organisations. As I said, having the cohort actually helped us to identify what the key factors were that helped or hindered the adoption of the process at the same time as understanding best practice. Some of the learnings that we have taken has helped us develop an initial programme that aims to stimulate new working practices and support projects that come through our Centre for Civic Innovation. So what we'll do now, I'll just give you a little bit of background regarding some of the processes we established. At the very beginning, again, just to try and help ensure the citizen was at the heart of redesigning our services, we developed a process that was based around the four key principles behind design thinking, which are, for those who don't know, being people centred, collaboration and co-design, communicating creatively and constantly iterating. So what we did at the very beginning is we spoke with a number of external agencies and explored what was currently out there. What was quite evident was that there wasn't very much going on from a local government perspective. And the examples that we came across were predominantly within the private sector. So what we did was, in partnership with some organisations such as the V and A Dundee, was we created an initial programme that we used to support some of the projects that we were working on. That initial process was broken up into three key stages. The first stage was to help build internal capacity and was the 39 Minute Design Challenge. The 39 Minute Design Challenge, for those who don't know, it's a method of building capacity with teams and individuals. And it actually originates from Stanford University's Institute of Design and has subsequently been developed and delivered by the International Service Design Agency, IDEO, based in America. It's something that the V and A Dundee is actually using as part of the delivery of their Design for Business programme that they're undertaking at the moment. Stage two of the initial process was then about trying to define what our problems actually were. And the model that we had adopted was the five day sprint. That process is for answering critical business decisions through design, prototyping and testing ideas with customers all over a five day window. Now, normally whilst doing that within the public sector, this could potentially take up to five months. So it was a bit of a challenge to try and cram this in over five days. Stage three of the process was then about actually trying to solve the problem. And the model adopted was the 100 Day Challenge, which was developed by Visa as part of their CoLab Gym. And what this basically did was trying to draw in expertise from the private sector to develop and design new concepts that would help to solve some of our challenges. Some of the timelines that were attached to this process were pretty ambitious. And as it was the first time, there was a lot of caution within our organisation. So what we tried to do was identify a number of demonstrator projects that we could work through and test out the process, take the learnings from it and then try and design a methodology that would actually be appropriate to public sector working. What's happened from now is that the learnings from the demonstrator projects, combined with an internal realignment of our open innovation activities, has actually seen us redesign the programme to support future challenges. The new approach aimed to help us generate insight by leveraging the power of design and data. As I mentioned at the beginning, our current process is focused around three key pillars: design, data and innovation. So by helping to ensure that the problems that we are facing are framed correctly, it allows for solutions to be co-designed based on the needs of our communities with the efforts focused on those issues that, if resolved, would actually have the greatest impact. The design aspect of our process, as I mentioned, enables us to truly understand the problems that's being faced as an organisation. And when data comes in, it helps us to back up some of these findings uncovered during the research phase of the process, which again will give us the insight required to then go on and source solutions to the correct problems. Innovation is key to that. And the landscaping aspect of our process allows us to understand if there is in fact an actual solution out there or a potential solution could exist. By reaching out to some of these companies, we can then identify what the next steps are. So if we're not sure how to solve the challenge, we would issue something to the market. So how that would actually work is, as part of the problem definition, once we've identified a potential concept, we will go out to the market and we will look to see what solutions already exist. Now, the solution may reside within a completely different industry, but we then work out how we could potentially tweak that solution to suit our needs. If it's identified that there is no solution that exists, what we would then do is actually look out, see, is issue an innovation challenge. And I'll speak a little bit more about that within some of the case studies. For anyone who's interested in our current process, as part of a different programme of works, we are looking to develop an online toolbox that provides more information on these stages, as well as some of the tools that we use to support each stage. That's expected to be launched within March or April this year. And I'd be happy to provide information to anyone who's interested in finding out a little bit more. Looking to the future, we have been involved in a number of different programmes that has accrued some funding. And some of these programmes are now starting to come to an end. What I should say is that without that money, a lot of what we're currently doing would not have been possible. However, it's also come with some restrictions, which has meant that we've not been able to do everything that we'd hoped. So our intention over the next couple of years is to continually review the lessons that we've learned through the projects undertaken and refine that programme of works that has been established. Again, that's the process, we don't want to stand still, we will continually change to meet our needs. Partnership working. So I think it's safe to say, without developing the partners that we have, a lot of the work that we do wouldn't be possible. And if you look there on screen just now, that is just a handful of those that have actually been involved in some of the work. But what we're looking to do is continue to build and develop on existing partnerships that Glasgow has created. So like most public sector organisations, we don't always have the expertise in house. And when we do, we don't always have the capacity to support what is kind of been seen as something that's fancy at the moment. I suppose in a way, we've kind of been the victims of our own success. We don't have the funds to go outside and procure. Therefore, by learning on some of the expertise that these partners actually provide, their experience is crucial to the success of our programme. So just to pick on a few, the Glasgow School of Art, we've been involved in a handful of research projects with students that's looking at internal projects. They've only been over a 12 week programme, but we've already identified the value that that could bring. And we're looking at new ways and how we can collaborate further. You've got the V and A Dundee who I've already mentioned. Glasgow was part of their first alumni of their Design for Business programme. And we also now have representation on their Design Advisory Board. We have the Innovation Centres, we do a lot of work with the Data Lab. But there's also another, Census and the Digital Health Institute that we've been working on with as part of the challenges. And actually leaning on that expertise, they know what the future lies. They know what technology is at the forefront. So having them been able to guide some of the solutions and concept that we've been looking at has been invaluable. Through the engagement with these partners, we've been able to identify also some of the synergies and link these together to different projects that are going on across Glasgow City Council. There would be no point in us going ahead and doing things in isolation when there's already programmes of work being undertaken by other organisations. So being able to connect the dots has helped us to actually realise some real life benefits. But from our perspective, what we give to these partners is we can give them real life projects to work on. From an academic perspective, very big on research, but having the ability to focus on a real life challenge gives some of their students some real life experience, which for us would be invaluable, especially for them looking to go in the next stage of their career. Okay. So we've been working on a number of projects around open innovation, but what I wanted to do is give you a high level overview of three case studies that we've been looking at. The first one, it's a challenge that we're undertaking in collaboration with Glasgow City Health and Social Care Partnership. How this came about, within the digital telecare market, there's a number of drivers for change, which seen the organisation having to think a little bit differently. An example of that would be the impending analog to digital switch over. So the current service that is provided runs solely on the analog phone lines. There is a programme of works to remove these from the UK by 2025, which means the current service that we provide is not fit for purpose. We have to think, how could we do this differently? And how could we develop a digital solution that will also meet our needs? There's also demographic changes within Glasgow. People are living longer, which means that there is going to be an increase in request for service as the future comes on. So we need to think about how could we realign existing resources and deliver services that are actually going to meet the needs, not for the next couple of months, not for the next couple of years, but for the next 10 to 15 years. The approach that we took for this was that we weren't quite sure how to solve the challenge. So by using an initial process, we undertook a five day design sprint, which basically got not only senior stakeholders within the room, but people on the ground, people who knew the service inside out, to try and understand what the current challenges actually were. The output from the sprint actually seen a new innovative model designed that the guys were then going to take forward as part of their telecare reform project. But what we identified that technology is a key enabler and without having the technology required, the new concept wouldn't work. Due to the current climate, the guys didn't have the money or resources to go out, start to develop new solutions, as there was nothing that already existed. We checked not only within the UK but also worldwide. This isn't a UK specific problem. All across the world, the analog phone lines will be deactivated. Therefore, we had to think, how could we lean on some of the expertise worldwide to look at developing this solution? And if by magic, an opportunity came up as part of Scottish Enterprise's Can Do Innovation Challenge Fund. Now, it was an open call, we submitted an application and we were awarded £150,000 for the first phase of the project. And that challenge was really looking to develop a digital solution that would allow some of Glasgow's most vulnerable citizens to live independently within their own home without the reduced reliance on publicly funded interventions. As part of the Can Do Fund, we used the SBRI process, which is Small Business Research Initiatives, which was supported through Innovate UK. We put a call out to the market and we got over 50 responses from different organisations proposing a concept that they thought would actually solve our challenge. We've actually selected five of those companies and we're currently undertaking a period of research and development with them to explore their concept further. The first phase of that is due to end in March this year. We have provisionally secured an additional £300,000 to look at a potential phase two, should we wish to proceed. And that's something that we're working with the companies just now to finalise their concept and look at how we could take this forward. For any other organisation that is experiencing huge problems but don't have the money to solve or to explore further, I would definitely suggest reaching out to the guys at Scottish Enterprise to find out how they could support your own challenge. They actually have an open call at the moment, which I'm led to believe closes at the end of March. If you have a look on their website, if you search for Scottish Enterprise Can Do Fund, you'll find the contact details there. And they will actually work with you to try and explore what your challenges are to help you define what the key problems are, that will then allow you to then submit an application forward. Our next case study is in relation to our public transport challenge. Now, this has been supported through our European funded project called Be Good. Now, Be Good is a programme that's looking at how to build an ecosystem and generate opportunities through the use of open data. So we had secured the money, but didn't have a challenge to focus on. At that time, the Glasgow Community Planning Partnership had just issued the community plan and it was identified that over the next 10 years, the two of their main priority areas were going to be around childcare and public transport. So by linking in with these guys, we put our heads together and we then formed a challenge that was looking at how is public transport currently a barrier to Glasgow achieving inclusive growth? Now, that inclusive growth aspect comes in through our economic development strategy. It's one of our key priority areas and it's something that we're going to be focused on over the next number of years. Now, we're not experts within public transport and there was a number of other reports, publications that had been created through external agencies. So what we did was, we took a period of time just to review some of the learnings that were made from other organisations that would try and help us form a challenge that we could actually issue to the market. One of the key things that we'd identified was that one of the main demographics that was particularly affected by some of the barriers around public transport were the citizens that were deemed as being socially isolated. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to focus on that. And the challenge that we put together was, again, in collaboration with others of the organisation, was looking at how do we better connect people in place that would then try and help some of the challenges faced by our citizens who were deemed socially isolated. As part of that Be Good project, we had a duty to look at how do we procure new services innovatively? Now, this wasn't something that Glasgow had any previous experience in. So we'd reached out to our colleagues within the Scottish Government and we were made aware of the SIFTEC model. Now, the SIFTEC model, basically a public sector body that works with public sector agencies all across Scotland who help shape out their challenges, issue it to the market and then work in partnership to develop new innovative solutions. So for those who don't know, the model was phased out over two phases. The first phase, you've got your exploration phase and that involves working with up to three organisations to try and refine their concept over a three week period. On the back of that, they would then present back to you their findings and a decision is then made to then take forward one, potentially two of those solutions through the accelerator phase, which is over a four month period. For our challenge, we had, and we're working with a social enterprise, Midec, who have came up with an innovative idea about actually developing an online platform that allows for citizens to provide instant feedback on situations that they experience within public transport. But not only does it benefit the citizens, we can then use some of that to actually inform policy decisions going forward. There's also a benefit to the council as what we can then do is we can actually target particular citizens with specific offers that we have at the moment. So an example of this would be So an example of this would be somebody, a single mother, who has signed up and registered an interest and continually provides feedback on some of her journeys via public transport within Glasgow. We know a little bit about her, so what we're able to do is then we're able to target that individual with particular programmes, activities, events that are currently going on in that city. And again, that's to try and target that social isolation aspect, which we had identified for a single parent was key. We are just about approaching the end of the accelerator phase and the next stage is for us to get together with MyDex to then think about what the next stage will look at. So we're currently looking at pre-commercialisation and how we then take that forward. Something which our legal and procurement guys, although they've been involved at the very beginning, they will be crucial for what we're looking to do going forward. The next case study, which is again slightly different from the previous two, it's around our travel mobility across Glasgow. So Glasgow is one of the world's top sporting cities and it's a major destination for conferences and concerts. Many thousands of people actually come to the city on a regular basis for these events. However, the challenge that this actually brings is getting people across the city safely and conveniently to the location. So if you think for those who've been in Glasgow and there's been a major event on at a hydro or one of the football stadiums, certain aspects of the city will grind to a halt. So what we're looking to do, how do we maintain our positions atop destination and grow that offering further? And look at developing new innovative concepts that can best manage large scale events and the movements of such large people and ensure that their experience, but also from a resident and a business and a business community perspective as well, is a positive one. So this challenge actually came about through a partnership we'd already established with a company called Itron. Itron are an American based organisation that currently are focused in around the utility sector, but they've now developed a focus around smarter cities. We were asked if we would be one of the cities that actually publishes a challenge on their new smart city framework, which is something that we did back in November. Now, that challenge is currently still open and is due to close in the next week. And it's already attracted worldwide interest from some of the world's leading developers. What we're hoping to do is, over the next couple of months, is assess and evaluate the applications that we've actually received with the view to then selecting a winner and again, working with our colleagues in legal and procurement, look at how we could best procure this solution and actually roll it out. So I would love to sit here and say that it's been pretty straightforward and it's been easy. However, it certainly came with its challenges. We're nearly two years into our open innovation programme and it's only really been the past couple of months that we've really started to see some of the traction being made. And even a change in mindset from some of the doubters who'd actually questioned why we were using open innovation in the workforce. What I want to do is give you a very quick overview of some of the challenges that we have faced when trying to embed it across our organisations. I would imagine that most of these are similar to other public sector organisations and again, I'd be happy to follow up on some of the points should anybody be interested in hearing about more. The first one obviously is adversity to risk. So there's always a risk of innovation, that the concept that's being developed could fail. Although we do always try and put the steps in place to mitigate this. As well as the obvious risk of failure, there are a number of other risks which are involved in trying to introduce innovation. For example, the perception that innovation may render the skills of the staff currently involved in our process redundant. Now, that's something that we face huge challenges with, so it's about how do we actually try and bring along the people and actually involve, to actually prove to them that innovation doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to make their job redundant. It's about how do we work with them to actually use that resource more effectively. The other big ones are in resources. So again, within the current financial climate, resources are limited and those resources that we do have are allocated to other projects that are focused on delivering huge financial savings that are part of our transforming Glasgow project. But what we're trying to do is, how do we identify and actually demonstrate some of the benefits that innovation can actually bring to try and realign some of that? Now, what that may actually mean is, it may not be internal resources, but how do we try and procure some of that expertise from the external agencies that we are working with to try and work on some of the projects that we're looking at? The big one obviously, and I'm sure all of you will know, is on policies and procedures. But the policies that currently exist within the public sector, they aren't there to breed innovation, in fact, they're there to kill it. So what we're trying to do is, as part of the programme, how do we develop a new way of working that actually demonstrates some of these benefits? That will hopefully lead to some policy change, not only within Glasgow City Council, but across Scotland, to drive some of these actions forward. The last one is, again, how do we overcome short term focus? We've got huge financial savings and it's about how do we try and look at it a little bit differently and not be as reactive as we're being and actually be a little bit more proactive. So let's not focus on what the short term challenges are, but how do we look at what the long term challenges are going to be and then try and develop solutions that will try and solve some of that? So the next, what I wanted to do is share you some key learnings that we've taken from our involvement today. The first one is key and it seems pretty obvious just now, but in reflection, it wasn't something that we looked at and it's around strategic alignment. Obviously, having an innovation strategy is ideal, but for those that don't, how are you able to realign the work that you're looking to do around open innovation, who some of the other main strategies exist within your organisation? So what we've been able to do over the past couple of months is actually realign it to some of the key actions that have been identified within our strategic plan. And we will continue to do that going forward. The other key one, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. When I first started my involvement around open innovation, I thought that the term innovation meant it had to be something brand new that was developed. But what I'd identified quickly was that there already are solutions out there that could help some of the challenges that are being faced. So how do we reach out to some of these organisations and actually work with them? Potentially just to tweak their existing product to actually suit our needs. What we have found particularly within our digital telecare project is that developing a brand new solution and actually undertaking research and development can take years to actually get where you want it to be, whereby if you're able to identify solutions that already exist, they can be adapted a lot more quickly and a lot more efficiently to help solve the challenges at a quicker pace. And again, for us, that kind of stresses the importance of undertaking the research and landscaping at the very beginning of the project. There are a number of other innovation models that are out there. As I mentioned before, a lot of these lie within the private sector. What we have identified is that not one size fits all. And what we have done over time is actually trial out new processes and try and adapt that to suit our needs. And we'll continue to do that going forward. As I'd mentioned before, we've had our existing process and we've now tweaked that and we'll continue to tweak it going forward. And again, our processes rely heavily on that design mindset, which helps us to try and work in conjunction with the communities of Glasgow to design new services. Problem definition, for us it's essential. You have to speak with everybody who's actually involved to try and understand what the true problems are. Being able to frame the challenge correctly leads to the development of solutions that actually will have real impact. By not doing that, what we've found is, you actually focus on solutions that, yes, it would be nice, sorry, you focus on the problems that, yes, it would be nice to solve, but it doesn't really add any benefit to the organisation. Therefore, you could see yourself spending a number of months working on something that won't have that impact that you really need. The benefits is key. As I mentioned before, we have been on a process now for over two years. And what we've found is, by being able to try and demonstrate some of the benefits by looking at some of the quick wins. So when we're trying to understand a challenge, we look at some of the projects that will come out of that. And being able to focus on those that we can do quite quickly actually sees a real benefit of looking at this as a new way of working. But it allows us to then take forward some of the longer term strategic concepts that we'd be looking to design as part of some of our challenges. And I suppose most vitally, its procurement support is essential. And I've learned a hard way around this, being involved, by doing this on my own, I'm not a procurement expert. Some of the models that we've looked at are focused around pre-commercial procurement, which is all very well, you can work with somebody, you can co-design a solution. But when it actually comes to the nitty gritty and you want to procure that, you then have to go back to the very beginning, go to the market and then issue a tender. For us, Edinburgh have done this very well and for those who were on the previous webinar would have heard Molly speak about some of her experiences. We've been working, we've got representation, as I'm sure other local authorities have, on a new focus group that's been set up by the Scottish Government. And that is about putting heads together to look at how we can try and solve some of the challenges across the procurement landscape within the public sector. So that's only a few of our learnings today. Again, for anybody who's interested, I'd be happy to speak with you. If you're looking to find out a little bit more. So where does that leave us as an organisation? So the next step for us is, we're going to continue to define our process and we'll refine that over the next couple of years. And again, that will come out with the continued learning of the number of projects that we have ongoing at the moment. We are going to be developing a new governance structure internally and an associated project evaluation criteria to manage our portfolio going forward. That's something which we haven't had to date and it's meant that we've been working on anything that comes to us to try and demonstrate some of the benefits. But now with our experience, we're going to look at it in a more structured way and actually focus on projects that have the greatest impact. As I mentioned before, our team isn't the biggest, so we need to make sure that we're actually using our resources effectively. The last one's about our toolbox. As I mentioned to you previously, we're going to be designing an innovation toolbox that's particular to GCC. But although it has been created to try and share best practice within our organisation, it will also be available externally. We're going to continue to build on and develop our existing networks that are in place. So again, how do we look to try and lean on some of that external expertise to try and bring it in internally, to try and build on capacity? And the last one is to continue just to raise the profile. So we have only just begun to scratch the surface around open innovation. What we want to do is look at, how can our learnings from the programme actually benefit some of the various departments that we have across Glasgow City Council? And then take some of this forward. So I suppose, thank you very much for listening. The offer's there, my contact details are on screen just now. We're more than happy to speak with other public sector bodies that would be interested. Even if it's a chat over the phone or even if you wish to come out and see the taunting and what we're looking to do within the space, please do get in touch. Thank you and I'll hand you back over to Siobhan for the Q and A.
That presentation was brilliant. I learned a lot from that actually. So as John said, there's an opportunity here to ask any questions about John's presentation or anything that you might be curious about open innovation. I'm sure John will do his best to answer as many questions as he can. So as I mentioned before, you can use the chat box to ask any questions that you may have. And I'll give you a few minutes to pop them in into that box just now. Meanwhile, I'd just like to give a shout out to a couple of events and webinars that are coming up in the next couple of months. And so our next webinar as part of this series will be around intelligent automation and we'll be joined by a member of the IEA team at Edinburgh, sorry, the City of Edinburgh. And that will be on February the nineteenth, so I will share details about that to our attendees this morning. And we'll also be joined by Sterling Council on February the twenty seventh and they will share their experience of open innovation and the challenges that they have faced and conquered and led to believe. So that will be on February the twenty seventh and again, we'll share the details of that after in this webinar. And we're also organising an event with CivTech and we're in the early stages of defining the agenda for that. So we will shape that and share details in the next couple of weeks to everyone on here today. So again, the webinar has been recorded and we will upload this to our YouTube channel after the webinar. So we would encourage you to share that with your colleagues as well. And we will have Molly, as John mentioned earlier on, Molly Kerr from the City of Edinburgh. She will give a more in-depth explanation to her experience of open innovation in Edinburgh. And we're yet to agree a date for that, but she was on our previous webinar as well. So there's lots coming up and as I said, I'll share this information with you all afterwards. And if you do have any questions following this webinar, then please do either email John directly with the email on screen or you can email digitaloffice directly at info@digitaloffice scott. So John, there's just a couple of questions in here this morning. Is there any documentation which can be shared in relation to the process that you've described? I know you mentioned a toolkit or a toolbox earlier on, is that something that's going to be part of that?
Yes. I suppose at this present moment, we are still working to articulate what our challenge actually is. But there is a huge documentation online, if you're interested in particularly the design aspect. The design council where the Double Diamond was first formed, they provide a comprehensive overview of their four key steps around discover, find, develop and deliver. And again, that gives you an understanding as to how they've approached it. But as Siobhan mentioned, we will continue to work on our toolbox and once the materials are available online, we'd be more than happy to share. As I said, Glasgow doesn't want to do this in isolation. Therefore, if there are other people interested in potentially adopting our process, we'd be keen to work with you to try and work out how that actually fits and then try and take the combined learnings to actually tweak that process going forward. So again, what I can do is, I can follow this up. Once we've got something that we can share, I'll be sure to send that out to the email address you provided.
That's great. Thanks, John. The next one is around choosing your business partners. Could you explain how that's done?
So I suppose it's kind of been twofold. Firstly, what we did was, we had identified what the council's key strategic priorities were going to be over the next five, 10 years. And we were then able to work out the sort of activities that we're going to be looking to get involved in. And what that then allowed us to do is actually to reach out and find out what other, not only private sector but academic institutes were actually undertaking. So a good one there would obviously be is, our process was always and will be based around the key principles behind design thinking. Now, we have the Glasgow School of Art on our doorstep within Glasgow and their Design and Innovation School is trying to teach some of the brightest students new ways to try and solve some of the challenges. So for us, that was a perfect fit. But the other side of things is, some of it's also been luck. And I really shouldn't admit that, but it's being in the right place at the right time, it's getting out there to all these different events, it's being nosy. It's just listening to what other people are doing. So from an academic perspective, our Centre for Civic Innovation, we really see that as being, for want of a better term, a living lab whereby we can co-create and test out new solutions within a physical space. We had got wind of other academic institutes that already have living labs and we're looking to set something up. to set something up. Now, there'd be no point in doing this in isolation, so we just worked at it and worked at it, identified the best appropriate people to speak with and then actually put forward our case as to why we should work together and that's actually seen some real benefit and we're now starting to see some traction on that going forward.
Brilliant, thank you very much. The last question we have here this morning is, I think, probably always the toughest subject to conquer, I suppose, and it's around culture. And the attendee's asking, how have you generated a culture of innovation inside the council? I suppose you could stretch on that slightly and if it's not conquered yet, how are you planning to?
Yeah, I'm not allowed to mention the word culture within our office because it is that big and it's actually quite scary. I suppose we haven't conquered it and I don't think that we may ever conquer it within my life of working within public sector. But what we have tried to do is actually generate and demonstrate the benefits that this can actually, that this process can actually bring. So by having a number of internal events, we have brought staff who are at the frontline involved and provided them an exposure and that was really just for like an hour and a half, an hour and a half workshop and giving them a generic challenge, something that they face within their day-to-day job. And by taking them through our process, they're then able to develop new innovative concepts within an hour and a half. So an example would that be is a project that we have internally that had been going on for about a year and a half, there'd been no real movement. What we wanted to do was get people in a room, work through our process and see the benefit that actually brung. So at the end of that hour and a half, we actually had 36 innovative concepts that had been developed by people on the frontline to how they could potentially take some of that forwards. Now, that's only one aspect. We continue to engage directly with all levels of staff to try and change that mindset, which is so badly embedded within public sector organisations. And I think, to be quite clear, we aren't going to change everyone's mindset, but if we can target those who have that willingness to look at things differently, that is really all that we need. So rather than looking at it, let's get everyone, let's get the people that we really need and start to work with them. One of the other things is that we've been looking at, for one of our partnerships, they're looking at around how do we enable innovation and creativity within an organisation? And that's something that we're at the early stages of discussing with an academic institute. What we're going to do is maybe lean on some of their expertise and then how do we potentially try and embed some of their resources? To try and understand the challenges that are being faced from a cultural perspective and then actually do something on the back of that. So that's something that we're hoping to maybe confirm within the next couple of months. And again, that will be a two-to-three-year project that will hopefully realise some significant benefits.
That's, I mean, thank you very much, John. So we don't have any other questions at the moment, but again, if you've got anything that may pop into your head after the webinar, then do email John with the email address on screen or info@digitaloffice.scott and we'll get back to you as soon as we can. So as part of the open innovation project for the digital office, we are looking at defining what AI is for local government as a sort of collective definition, because I think that's one of the biggest questions that people have. And we're currently working on an introduction to Open Innovation leaflet where all our webinars will be listed in there to access and there'll be a general overview of, again, what open innovation is and what we can do collectively as a partnership to move that forward within Scottish local authorities. So following the webinar, I will circulate some links and key dates, et cetera, for webinars and events that are coming up in the next couple of months. And we would encourage people to get in touch and get involved as much as they possibly can because it is a partnership working and we're looking to build as much capacity as we can across the board. So I'd just like to finish off by thanking John. I'm sure you'll all agree, his presentation was fantastic this morning and also a thanks to Glasgow City Council for giving John's time this morning. So we hope to see everyone on the next webinar and if you've got any questions, please do not hesitate to get in touch. Thanks all.